...two weeks away. I just don't know how all of the conditions, at least my conditions, are met in such a short time, so I just need to say that further ahead.
Um, Henry.
Thank you, David. I'm so inspired by the Vice Mayor's speech that I don't know where to begin my own. But I think particularly Denise, that you got Steve Marsh to say the thing that we need to hear more than anything, that this is about one community. This is a zoning petition that is about one community in so many different ways, whether it's about the physical layout, segregating MIT off into its part of the community, or even segregating Kendall Square away for the rest of the community. This is about building one single vision of that. And when you talk about the jobs piece of it also, we're a one community. It's not, the jobs don't belong to Kendall Square, the jobs belong to all of us. And you've been very good at talking about the construction side of jobs, the jobs ahead of them, the union jobs as time goes on. And I want to throw into the mix that as one community, we need to look at Kendall Square as one hell of a job site for everybody in the whole city. And that making onramps for people of all ages to see that as part of their city and their place to be working, I think is really important. Being on the school committee this term, as the mayor, I'm much more cognizant, I think, than I've ever been about how there's a view that, well, that's there and this is us. And I've seen speeches and movies where either Ellen Zanoff or Jeff Young have made this statement, "Think about kids on Windsor Street. Do they think they're going to work in Kendall Square?" And people always seem to think, no, they don't think that those jobs, which by the way are like right out the window, are not jobs for them. And we've got to change that. So I was really pleased to see in the draft, or I think that was the draft, about community benefits, something about workforce. But I thought we really needed to flesh it out and talk about jobs in construction, but also talk about what's the vision of the city? Are we thinking we're going to make sure that our kids are all very well-prepared and if they choose to be scientists, technologists, engineers, or math people, that's the STEM acronym, or if they just want to be part of the support staff of what goes on in the many Kendall Square businesses, that they're prepared, that they see those employment offices as open to them? And so I'm looking for a way which the community benefits spell that out, the whole question. And I know one thing I asked for was how many jobs are going to be created by this proposal? I don't know if you were able to deal with some numbers about what the expectation is of the number of jobs to be created in this, just in zoning proposals.
Yeah, it's a very rough estimation. It depends on the actual, you know, specific use of buildings. Using some of the population density numbers that the city uses, generally projecting, it's order of magnitude, a couple thousand permanent jobs. There's probably going to be, and that's being somewhat conservative, and projecting, construction jobs, order of magnitude, at least 1,200 due to cost of development, probably a lot more than that in factories or the individual buildings and spaces. So those are some broad numbers.
That's very helpful, because it leads us to start thinking really concretely about jobs and people, matching people to jobs. You hear about the retail, those are going to be jobs too. There's going to be jobs of all kinds. But I guess I'm actually most concerned, because I've heard this discussion about kids not going to MIT. I'm really less concerned about kids choosing to go to MIT than having the choice that they want and feeling as if they're well-prepared in math, science, in STEM, in the whole STEM area. And what we've come to understand, and Kennedy sort of led us partly to this, is that school day is only 8:30 to 2:30. Kids are learning in a whole range of ways, all year long and all day long. And so creating some kind of an infrastructure that supports kids really getting the enrichment they need to be prepared in STEM. If they want to apply to MIT, fine, let them be prepared to go to MIT, because we have had a great system in the city of making standard for children possible in school and out of school, summertime and school year time. So I'm asking for help and partnership in making that happen for all our kids. Probably too many people have heard me say this, but when I first ran for office...
Twenty-six years ago?
Twenty-six years ago. My speech was, you know, here we are, if you hire from MIT, our kids should have the best education in the country. They should have the opportunity to work in all of these businesses. And yet we're still talking about that. And part of the conundrum is we don't learn everything in the school day. We have to have all those other enrichment opportunities, and we need to build a system like that. So I think in the community benefits section, there's a place to spell that out a bit, and I would look forward to seeing that happen. I also note that the nonprofits, the community benefits section that you see, I feel, is still a rough draft, from what I've seen. It doesn't include nonprofits, and all our general conversation about community benefits has been that we have, that our nonprofits do a whole lot of work for us without getting even notice, the needs that they have, and then we need a way for community benefits to flow to them. So this is not just about your petition at all, this is about conversations we've had about how are we going to allocate community benefits, and there are some others that we already have in the May, right? So I just want to make sure that this petition doesn't limit the way community benefits are thought of, sort of similar to what Denise said, so that we're not able to really do the right thing based on a city's vision of how community benefits need to be collected and allocated and so on. So I mentioned the part about the gateway. I did a little sketch of Kendall Square as kind of like an oak leaf, you know, and you think of it going down Main Street, it's the stem, and then you have these little, sort of cytoplasm, I guess that's a biological chunk, but it doesn't look like the ordinary kind of square, it doesn't have the same easy focal point. And I think that the stem needs a little more attention, leading into, so our six, other successful squares, Harvard Square, leading into Harvard Square, you know you're coming into the square, and everything kind of leads to that crescendo of commercial experience. Same thing in Central, coming from Lafayette Square, the entrance to the square. So let's not leave out the entrance from the neighborhood side, particularly from the community side. And I think that that just needs a little beefing up and some attention to that building that might be closing things off somewhere. Finally, on housing, Cherry Street, yes. I mean, I know Denise has been working on this a long time, David's talked about it, even I had a shot at this some years ago, thinking, when are we going to be able to make use of this lot? Maybe it's for housing, maybe for something else, but I think that that's a good piece of business between us to get done. And I want to call out the idea of senior housing, and I know we've talked about that in some of these micro units or what have you, but you saw a natural, the natural experiment almost led to having that kind of senior housing for Mayor, former President Paul Bray, leading the charge for housing for post-graduates, not undergraduates, not graduate students, but post-graduates of MIT who still want to be part of the community. And I think there are others who would like to be handers on to that as well. So I'm just hoping that that's part of the vision as a cultural, so that's my check.
Ken, I have you next. Did you have a quick comment, David? I know you have to leave.
The biggest community benefit I think of is that the kids in Newtown, for Washington, when they look across the street will really have some connection to what's there. And I don't just mean proximity, but opportunity and real linkage. And I don't know how you invite the Equestria Street Partners to become that. I sent to Steve Marsh at an event earlier this week that, well, everybody might enjoy this, but I'm glad that I wrote a letter to President, I feel that I did, and where we are today is a much bigger place than where we were at that time. And I look forward to a growing partnership and understanding of the interrelatedness of community that would have those kids as an integral part of what's in their neighborhood. So that's as general. And in specific, the help I'm looking for really is a big piece of Mark Fuller's job, because Mark Fuller has this extraordinary piece of real estate that really needs some help in developing. And I hadn't even talked to Robert Pivor on Fuller's of this vision, but I've talked to him broadly before, but I would love to see MIT become a partner in helping Fuller House in that neighborhood, serving those kids where it is having this impact. Strengthen itself in the 21st century, and largely around the physical plant, but I could discuss that head on.
I just want to piggyback what Ken said, because he made me think of it, just very quickly. When you talk about having, let's say, the Fletcher Academy of Academy kids in particular, be more engaged and see MIT as an option, and I think a very important way to live it on the vine, and the idea that was to get the kids from the school and they would onto the campus, because the more you visit, come on to participate, get benefits from, the more becomes a reality, as I remind. Or the fact that the Fletcher Academy is one of the few paid by schools that has a science lab that's undisputed, and you have such a wealth of opportunity and by way of intellectual capital that could be flowing into the school. I mean, these are just some little tidbits, things that MIT could have been doing in that, to, as I said earlier, around rebuilding and rebuilding relationship, these are things that can be happening now. You know, students from Area Four, students from Area Four, students from the Fletcher Academy, they can actually walk into the MIT museum and be able to go just because they live in Area Four. And those are, these are little things that don't cause, I think, anything. And for me, I can't judge MIT so much on what you're going to say you're going to do, I'm going to judge you by what you've done. And that's precious to me, though, it takes a lot to build faith in me that you're willing to improve that relationship. And now we have an opportunity called extortion, if you like.
You're being silly.
Get me a scratch pad. Not a little bit.
Public extortion's different.
Public extortion, absolutely. I might want to hurt myself. But I just wanted to use that opportunity to just say, and Stevie Genn has sent a letter that I wrote to him, which ensured the councils felt that some of these missed opportunities that I certainly want to have strengthened in this process going forward.
All right, I have Tim, and then Layland, and then Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for being here. Just echo what Councilor Reeves said, you know, about this true partnership with Area Four, not only Area Four, but East Cambridge, you know, there's other several houses that need the attention throughout the community, and I think it might be stepping forward to help those communities very, very forward, as East Cambridge and Area Four were impacted by this proposed rezoning. So you've certainly heard my concerns in terms of really creating a real true partnership with the Cambridge Public Schools, but I just think that it's sort of lacking, and something that has to happen at this point, especially with the initial technical odds, those students who want not to go to college. And we're all excited about those kids not being accepted to MIT, but I'm also concerned about kids who want, when you recall, need assistance and getting a good trade for their careers, so I just don't want those kids to be left out. And even though the public do apprentice program, you know, for jobs that are recreated, but it's not only the construction jobs and the jobs after, as Denise said, or what Ken said about retail and things like that. So Vice Mayor talked about the open space, certainly I think the open space thing would be resolved very easily with the multi-use path on the Grand Junction Railroad, that I feel very strongly about, which is of not only being an environmental benefit, it's also an economic development benefit for MIT and for the communities of leaking from Boston all the way into San Diego to North Station. I think that is very, very important, and I think looking forward to, I know you're coming back with some more lines, I won't get very careful, but I think clearly, you know, having that multi-use path, it would be just such a boon for all communities, MIT, the neighborhoods, connecting the neighborhoods, kids using that to get from East Cambridge over to Charles River, to the Moore School, and vice versa. So, and also, you know, a lot of people would take advantage of that, would be taking cars off the road, people would be able to bike to work. So those are certainly not new news to you, but my issues are, so I'm looking forward in the next two weeks to see response on that. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn.
Thank you. I wanted to just piggyback on this topic that Vice Mayor Simmons brought up, about education. And this was, I guess, it was a specific task, but, you know, this was a comment previously by a school committee member that testified at previous ordinance meeting that he'd like to see more students admitted into MIT. Because I don't just want to see more students admitted into MIT, because you can achieve that by lowering standards or just taking some students or anything, I want to see more students from CRLS prepared and equipped to meet those high standards. And I, because I'm careful, I don't think it's, I don't think it's MIT's job to fix our school system, and I think if we start to think that it's your job, then we betray the tremendous amount of work and time, energy, and dedication that's been put in by our present mayor, by our two past mayors who are here at the table, by the superintendent, to radically improve the state of education within our system and continuing to make mayor's effort to work on STEM, the other STEM, the science, technology, and math STEM, I think, the superintendent by Mayor Marissa. But I think, to that point, the school system and the people in the administration need to run and own, that we need to figure out how to make, reach those high standards and have more of our students reach those high standards that MIT goals, for all its, for all its big MITs. I think, to that point, I think that there's, just want to throw out a couple of things where I should think that MIT could continue to be a partner. I know that MIT has already done some lots, but they're supposed to be excited to hear about education. Counselor, Vice Mayor Simmons has mentioned, and Mayor Davis. I think, you know, there's a lot, if we, for example, were to look at all the schools, which schools send the most students to MIT? You know, I'm sure there's some school out there that sends three, four, or five students to MIT. Can we, can you connect those schools and bring them to Cambridge and have our administration and the mayor and superintendent try to learn some lessons from how they're recruiting their students and getting so many admitted in there? Can we look at the MIT program and figure out how we can start to build that pipeline earlier on so that they're on track to graduate from MIT? I think that there's lots of opportunities for how MIT can share best practices from, you know, tax counselors and principals and administrators from across the country and across the world, who are focused on getting students at MIT. What can we also learn from them to improve our schools? But I really think that, I don't want to just, I think that MIT is an invaluable partner and helping to better prepare our students, but I want to be clear that it's not just your job, because I think that it tracks from the incredible work done by three mayors and past mayors at this table and the superintendent.
Mr. Chair? I just want, while the point's still in front of us, I just wanted to say that in my comment, I don't disagree with him, I say MIT should be taking more of our students. I certainly agree about what he said, what the mayor said. What I am doing is using this opportunity to get your attention, because it's not, in a way, it's not anything a part of what you did, but we have your attention. And while we have your attention, I want not only you to hear us, but not only take what we come up with, MIT has the intellectual capital to, so that our students should be the greater beneficiaries of that. And I guess that's the way I'm trying to say it. So there's not, I don't want to write a program, it could be a mint program, it could be anything else, but what I'm looking for, while we have your attention, is a better way to strengthen out the dividends that are paid to our students. So I don't think there's any right or wrong way, and you may have something that we've not thought of, but I certainly want that to be a part of what goes on going forward. That's what I wanted to say.
Craig, and then Lynn.
Thank you. I can understand how we talked about the Cherry Street lot, and I hope you can make Counselor Simmons happy on that, it seems like a very reasonable and doable thing. How this morphed into a discussion about education, MIT's role in helping the Cambridge Public Schools is absolutely beyond me, and I could not be angrier at that. Our education and the education of our kids is way too important to have it drift into this discussion, like it means something. And I'm incredibly disappointed in folks that went that way.
Lynn.
Well, continuing on, Lieutenant Decker, I mean, Simmons said about while we have your attention, you know, you've heard that we're, have been for many years interested in a better use for the Cherry Street lot. We'd also dearly love to have the Grand Junction Railroad become more of the pedestrian and bike path that we think will really improve the connectivity in the city. And I want to add a third parcel to that, which is the Allen Street, the community garden, and that's been talked about for many years as well. So while we have your attention, is it on Watson or on Lynn? So while we have your attention on these things, I think all of those three deserve some consideration. And I would also like to echo what Counselor Simmons said, which is, she was mentioning that April 8th deadline, because that's the last Monday before this petition expires, and the 14th, which happens to be on the, the 15th?
Fifteenth.
So it would be a Monday, early 15th.
It's a holiday.
Okay, so back to April 8th being the last regular city council meeting, so we could always schedule another meeting, but it is very clear that there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be talked about. We're still at the, maybe we're at 40,000 feet now, but we're still not at the really nuts and bolts wording of the petition, we're still at the pictures and the conceptual stage. So I have an urge, if it's at all possible, that this petition expires and then we, you know, you're not going back to square one, obviously, you just pick up where you left off and we'll move this through quickly, but I think the resolution of the, this whole rezoning will be a much better project if we don't rush through it in the last 10 days.
Okay. Any last comments over here? Not necessarily.
Thank you. I heard every minute.
I just want to just, you know, I want to end by a couple of little announcements and one comment, and I'm looking at Hugh when I say this, that we can't forget the fact that the council is adopting a zoning petition which is very broad-based in that the actual project review piece of this, which is so vital to the success of the project, is in the purview of the planning board. And, you know, one thing that I want to just throw out there is this concept of the open pathway, or whatever we're calling it, into, you know, from Kendall Square into the MIT campus. I want to make sure that the vision that we're talking about today is something that you folks can actually work with. And what I mean by that is, is that obviously, under the current zoning, if this is adopted and if the headhouse there of the T does not change, obviously, the vision is very, very different than what we're talking about today. So I'm going to throw that out there, that, you know, and that's the risk, so to speak, that we run into when we approve broad guidelines, and the planning board is then looking at, you know, a plan that comes forward where, you know, people have to kind of move on their side to get by a passageway, if that headhouse doesn't move or they're out of ultimate plan. So, you know, I do want to say that that's something that I think is worth looking at and making sure that one way or another, we're getting the large entryway that we're all hoping we're going to see. You know, I do want to thank Hugh for being here and giving up his time. I know that the planning board has put an extraordinary amount of time into this petition. I want to thank the members of the public who are here. I am going to announce that we're going to have an ordinance committee meeting on Tuesday, April 2nd, at 4 o'clock. That is a little deviation from time, we're going to move it up a half an hour, because the mayor has a school committee meeting that night. But that will be an opportunity for the public to again offer public comment. It is my hope that by April 2nd, that we will have the current petition as we're talking about, a lot of the loose ends kind of tightened up, and that we would be discussing those tightening of language at the April 2nd meeting. I do want to remind folks from the public that they are invited to two scheduled events that are going to be happening at MIT, and it is mainly, namely, the name of the place, Five Grand Stakes. If you're looking at Five Grand Stakes at one Broadway, it's the door to the right, they're covered, kind of, the windows and the door are covered with blue right now.
Is it their payroom? Their payroom, Five Grand Stakes?
I didn't quite hear that, but I know that they will...
There will definitely be children there, I don't know.
So that's tomorrow from 10 to noon, and then it is also next Tuesday evening from 6 to 8. And that's an opportunity for the public to look at the kind of larger scale models that are in that location and to kind of walk through. And I think it's a much, you know, this is great for looking at massing in heights, this model that we have over here. I think that the one that you will be looking at, it just really shows probably the first four floors of this building.
It's really, it's something that's still in progress, we're going, you know, it's a helpful tool, again, since we built it to look at retail configurations, how pathways would work, think about the program.
The street states are part of it.
It's a street level view that we believe augments this model quite well. So you get the bigger picture here, this is the grand, and this will be the location.
So I think it's important for people to see that and hear about that. So those two meetings are coming up, the ordinance committee that I just announced on the 2nd. We may have another meeting similar to this meeting prior to that, we're going to look at whether we can fit that in or not, and with that...
Can we go back to the city council, we need a motion, we need a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
This is a city, this is, this is a special roundtable meeting of the city council, which Councilor has let us in, and we have a motion now to adjourn the city council meeting. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are adjourned.